Okay, good evening everyone. And welcome to the Senior Center. My name is Paul Cohen, I'm the Town Manager. And I want to thank you for coming out on such a gorgeous spring night to obtain information for Monday's Spring Annual Town Meeting. We've got 34 articles on the warrant. Tonight's session is to provide you with information in advance of the meeting. So you have in the back of the room as you came in, it was a printed handout of the slides that you'll see on the screen tonight and on in a town meeting. There's also the Thick Green Book, which is the detailed town proposed operating and capital budgets. And then there's also the Thinner Green Book, which is the Finance Committee Warrant Book and Recommendations on all the Town Meeting Warrant Articles. And again, we'll start it Monday at 7:30. And whatever we don't finish on Monday night, we'll come back here on Thursday evening and resume. I guess my first question I have is, are there any new Town Meeting members in the room this evening? So we have a fair number, so for those of you who aren't new, forgive me, I'll be a little more deliberate than normal. And for those of you who are new, welcome and thank you for stepping forward and joining the group of 165 Town Meeting Representatives who represent the over 36,000 people in our So, as I said, tonight is not meant to be a debate, it's not a mini-town meeting. What it is, is I'll present information and answer questions. And later this evening, I'll be joined by the Finance Director John Souza and Chris LaValle, the Chair of the Planning Board, and Kelly Beatty, who's also sponsors one of the articles with the Planning Board. So that's how we'll go this evening, and please, at any time, this is for your information, just raise your hand and I'll try to capture you and stop and answer questions that you have. And hopefully it'll be a productive evening and we can make it rather efficient because we expect Town Meeting will go to about 11:00 on Monday and hopefully we'll finish on Thursday. So with that, I'm not going to go through all the slides, you have them, you can read them, you know, and review them over the weekend. The first article at every Town Meeting, Article 1, for Spring and Fall Town Meeting is to hear reports of officers and committees. And basically, it's a non-voting article, but it's an opportunity for officials in the community to provide updates on the major issues, and particularly some longer-term issues. On the list we have this year are three articles. One is the Strategic Plan that was funded by Town Meeting. Our town's first strategic plan has been completed, and so there'll be a brief overview of that, and that will be available on the town's website for review, and hopefully it will guide the Town Meeting and the Town Leaders on the challenges ahead in the future. The second one is the Parker Middle School Building Committee Project. That is a project that's now in the feasibility stage. A Town Meeting has funded to advance the project to an ultimate vote probably two years from now, is the expected date in '27, on a new middle school. So the Building Committee Chair, Pat Muloney, will give a brief overview of what the committee's been up to, and really more importantly, what's coming ahead, particularly in the fall when the public input and discussion deliberation in terms of what grade configuration for the school and so forth will take place. And then finally, I'll return with a brief financial overview of the Town Meeting to give you and the remaining representatives sort of an overview of how we see things at this really unique financial time with the changes happening in Washington and then the economic uncertainty in terms of the economy going forward. So again, we're not going to go through these slides tonight, but you have them and you're welcome to read them and bring questions at Town Meeting on Monday. So again, there'll be no vote under Article 1. We'll then move to what was called the Consent Agenda. And the Town adopted this about a decade ago, following the lead of many other communities. And what it is, it's basically meant to be a bundling article where recurring generally non-controversial articles that are brought forward for consideration at every spring and/or fall Town Meeting are bundled together for a vote, a unified vote. And in this case, there's a dozen articles out of the 34 that generally tend to be non-controversial, generally has historically have passed by large margins. If somebody objects to any of those, they can be withdrawn and considered separately, but it's a way of trying to advance the meeting. And also, it kind of feels good at the beginning that you say, gee, we've got 34 articles and we've quickly dispensed with a dozen of those. And so that's the list there, but again, we'll go through them in the order tonight, and hopefully that gives you a sense of what's taking place under those articles. And from there, we'll then move to Article 2, which is always the adjustments to the current fiscal year operating budget. And so Town Meeting, you know, in the spring, much in in the fall, it's kind of has a rhythm to it and a traditional pattern. And in spring, the first thing we do is, under Article 2, is to make adjustments to the budget that was voted a year ago for our fiscal year that begins July 1st and ends on June 30th. In this case, the Town, the budget that we're in right now is about $162 million. It was prepared and released in January of '24, voted in the end of April '24, and then reality, like any other plan, happens starting in July, and then we've got a few months to go. So what happens is, is about a month ago, we look with the Town Accountant and Finance Director and the Department head to say, you know, what do we need to finish the fiscal year and what issues arose that took place? And customarily, we draw upon a $400,000 reserve fund, which is appropriated at every Town Meeting, and you'll see it later tonight, to meet extraordinary unforeseen expenditures that the Finance Committee can act upon if it's a necessity outside of Town Meeting. Otherwise, we bring it to Town Meeting for a vote. So in this case, we have $347,500 we're drawing off of that $400,000 reserve fund in one of these four budget line items, as you can see listed on the screen. And then from there, we go into the detail of what those, basically, items that we didn't foresee, and some of which were, you know, not foreseeable into the budget and were sort of extraordinary. The first one you see, for example, is legal services. I think, I've been here now 18 years, and this is the first time, I think we've drawn over on the legal budget, and there are a couple of combination of factors that led to that. One is we've had new Town Council this year, so there's an adjustment period in terms of the runout of prior council. The initiation of new council was new contracts, new procedures, new processes. There have also been a number of land use cases in town that were extraordinary this year with some 40B projects that took some extensive legal assistance, as well as a subdivision on Hildreth Street that involves significant time. We've also been in collective bargaining in our three-year cycle with our labor unions. And we've also had special Town Meeting in February dealing with accessory dwelling unit bylaws and so forth, so that sort of explains what happens there. And the human services one, you see a $13,500 request. The Town, this was an extraordinary year in human services. The Town replaced a 30-year employee in a one-person department with a new HR director, and so you really needed to bring that person up to speed. And obviously, that takes money from professional development and assistance. On the conservation land, they over-drew their budget for conservation land management activities. They had to do a detailed survey and title examination on a parcel over here at Freeman Lake, and they had some unusual tree removal activities on conservation land that were impacting about its properties. Sealer weights and measures, $21,000. What happened there was, we were in a contract with the Regional Planning Agency for a shared service. The Planning Agency suspended, terminated the contract and the service, and so we had to initiate our own joint service with two other towns, and so there was a transition cost to that. And then in the issue of public safety of the Police Department, they incurred overruns on replacement of equipment for new cruisers. They also added some unforeseen contractual obligations for outside assistance. And then recruitment supplies really has to do with equipping and training new officers. We had an extraordinary amount of turnover in the department due to retirements and some attrition, and then some dues and subscriptions. And then similarly, in the Fire Department, utilities are basically, the heat and electricity were over budget for the five fire stations, and they hit some significant costs in maintaining their vehicle apparatus. And then just equipment in terms of equipping and the operations of the department and building maintenance. And finally, this building is slightly over, again, a minor amount of $2,000 for utilities due to the colder than winter than normal, and then electricity was over as well. We had a pretty, we have, this building has solar panels, and when there's, it's also, the reserve is obviously the traditional landline, and so again, it's what happens during the course of operations. So once that article is dispensed with, we'll go, you'll have representatives here under Article 3 from the Neshova Tech, our Vocational School District. They'll be presenting the $4,53630 budget to fund the Town's Assessment for the upcoming school year. That's only an increase, as you'll see in the slides, of only .41%, or just over $16,000. And the reason that that budget is only a small increase for us is because our assessment is based on our student enrollment relative to the district's student enrollment. And in this case, the Town's enrollment declined while the district's enrollment slightly increased. And so that's how, that's how you see these variations in a given year. Once, excuse me, once that is completed, we'll then move on to the Chelmsford Public Schools' operating budget, which is $75,650,000. Dr. Lang, the Superintendent of Schools, will be presenting on behalf of the School Committee for the, what amounts to a $1.77 million increase or 2.4% increase in the operating budget for the Chelmsford Public Schools. And again, he'll, you have his presentation materials, and he'll explain and answer any questions that you may have on that budget. Once Dr. Lang completes his work on the school budget, we then vote the other Town Departments, because we've already, we've already tended to the vocational school and then the public schools, and then the remainder is what we call the General Government Operating Budget, which is your public safety, public health, administration, and so forth. And so I'll return for that presentation and budget. And as we noted in the earlier article, the Town votes by line items, and you can see there are a number of line items, generally tend to be personnel and expenses for municipal administration, public safety, public works, facilities, cemetery, community services, library, benefits and insurance, and debt service. And this is where you refer to those green books that you picked up going inside. The Thick Green Book has all the detailed line items of every department of the Town that gets presented in January, and then the Finance Committee holds meetings in February and March to review those and make its recommendations. And then you see that in their Thin Book, which is the Finance Committee's Recommendations on all the Town's Expenditures for the Year. To give you sort of an overview of it, you can see it's $168.4 million operating budget. Of that, the large proportion, or over three-quarters of it, comes from the property tax levy, where taxing to the legally allowed levy limit under Proposition 2.5 under state law without incurring an operational override. We forecast at this point $22.4 million in state aid, $13.1 million in local receipts. Local receipts are your motor vehicle excise, your building permit fees, and so forth. And then available funds are other sources of monies that come into the budget. And so, again, to give you an overview of that budget, which again is in detail, as I mentioned, the school budget's up by $1.77 million or 2.4%. The other departmental budgets, which is this article, is $38.3 million. It's up over $220,000, or .58%, but the key is the asterisk. And what the asterisk is, is it does not include funding for general government collective bargaining agreements. Under state law, collective bargaining agreements with the Town's Labor Unions have to be brought to Town Meeting for approval. They tend to run from a one to a three-year period, and Town Meeting ratifies the agreement that's approved by the Select Board by funding the first year of the agreement. And again, you'll see detail on this in the next article coming up. On the school side, under state law, the school department does not bring its labor agreements to Town Meeting for a vote. And so their, their funding for their labor agreements is already included in their budget, so when they ultimately reach their agreements with their unions, they move the money into the respective accounts of the total aggregate that we give the schools. And that's how it works in Massachusetts. School departments have what they have, budget autonomy, so Town Meeting can only give the total amount, which you saw requested for the Neshova Tech and the Chelmsford Public Schools. And as you can see, on the general government side, you can vote by departments in areas like public safety, you know, versus library versus administration. The schools is one bundle, and then again, within that bundle is funding for their contracts. So that's why it's only .58%. Obviously, when the contracts are funded and settled, that number will go, will go probably three times that amount, even closer to 2%. The big one, you can see, is benefits and insurance, almost a 12.5% increase of $4 million. That's primarily due to increases in our health insurance and retirement assessment. Our health insurance premiums are going up 17.8%. The Town funds 75% of that cost for active employees. The employees fund 25% and for retirees, it's 63, 37%. And then the other aspect is debt service. As you can see, our overall debt service is declining to just under, just about $10.4 million. However, as we get into that deeper, there's excluded debt service and non-excluded debt service. And what's happening there is our excluded debt service, which was the debt that the Town voted at the ballot to pay for primarily the sewer, the townwide sewer project, is almost extinguished, so that's bringing the decline down. But yet, our non-excluded debt service, which is funded as part of the budget for capital and other operations, is increasing. And so here's a little bit more detail on the health insurance. They said, from the budget we're in right now to the one that starts on July 1st, we have to appropriate almost $3 million more for health insurance. The Town insures about 1,000 retirees and about 600-plus active employees between the general government and the schools. You see our retirement assessment's up over $1 million to almost $13 million. That's driven by an unfunded pension liability that's set to be extinguished in the next decade. Our non-excluded debt service, as I mentioned earlier a moment ago, is going up by $686,000. Again, the employee compensation is an asterisk because it doesn't include the collective bargaining agreements, which is why it's only $101,000. Our solid waste and recycling contracts with our vendors who collect the solid waste and recycling, as well as the facility where it's delivered to and converted into electricity, the Covanta facility in Haverhill, those contractual increases are going up at a rate of inflation. And then Medicare taxes, basically your, the Town's payroll tax. There's information here about positions that are eliminated in the budget because this is not a level service budget unlike prior years. Because of these extraordinary cost increases, as well as the impacts of inflation, much like you at home, the Town has had to make some reductions in order to balance the budget. That detail is there in the slides for you, as well as reasonable requests other departments have that aren't honored in this budget. And that completes that article for the budget. We'll then pivot to the collective bargaining agreements that I've mentioned earlier. The Town has six labor unions. There are three within the Police Department, of the Lieutenant's Union, which is known as the Commander's Union, Officers' Union, the Superior Officers', which is the Sergeant's Union, and then there's the Patrol Officers' Union, and then there's also a Dispatchers' Union, so there's four within that building in the police station. And then there's the Firefighters' Union, which includes all the firefighters and captains, and then there's the Library Employees' Union. At this point in time for this Town Meeting, all we have reached agreement with have been the three police unions. And that's what you see here, the first one being the Commander's Officers' Association. You can see there's two lines there. Why that's the case is, that's a newly formed union of the police lieutenants. They became unionized about nine months ago, so they're actually in the first year of a unionization, but they don't have an agreement. So we fund the first year, as well as the first year of the upcoming fiscal year for the next three-year period. And then similarly, the Police Superior Officers and the Patrol Officers, more traditional, three fiscal year periods starting this July 1. And there's, there's a little bit more detail about the wage increases for the Commander's Union, similarly for the Superior Officers, and then the adjustment we made for the Patrol Officers and their collective bargaining agreements. And basically, they tend to reflect market, because right now, it is a competitive market for police, and it's kind of better than the labor market in general, but particularly for police in the wake of police reform, and so we are, as well as civil service reform, so we are constantly looking at what other towns are paying for their officers, because in the case of a police officer, a newly appointed police officer, new to the profession, has to go through a six-month police academy, and prior to being able to be put out in the street, and then does some field training. So obviously, there's an incentive to retain officers, because if you lose them, you then got to reset and send someone else to the academy for six months if you can't, if you can't recruit somebody from another community. And then if, so it's, that's how the market works, like most other fields. Once that article is completed, we'll then move on to the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, which as I mentioned earlier, is $400,000. We're keeping it at $400,000 for the upcoming fiscal year, which is basically about .2% of the Town's $168.4 million proposed budget. And as you can see, as I mentioned earlier, the Finance Committee is authorized to draw from this outside of Town Meeting for extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures in lieu of calling a Town Meeting, and then in more often the case, as we come to Town Meeting and draw from that fund in April as we near the end of the fiscal year. So that completes the action under Article 7. Article 8 is the capital budget, which is formed by the Capital Planning Committee. And I'm going to pause over this article right now, because the Finance Director John Souza, he's also a member of the Town's Planning Board, and they'll be coming into the hall probably in the next 15 or 20 minutes. We'll come back to this, because I want to recognize the work that John did, as well as expose you to John and how he'll present this at Town Meeting. And again, he can best answer questions as the Chair of that committee. And you can see, there's a lot of slides in your information packet that talks about the $6 million that's going to be expended, and John will walk through this with you when he arrives. Once that is completed at Town Meeting on Monday night, we'll then go to Article 9, because at this point, we will have completed the school budgets, the general government, the reserve fund, and now there are what we call enterprise funds, which are basically separate funds that are counted and tracked for by the Town for a particular purpose, in this case sewer. So what that means is sewer has a standalone operation, separate accounting. Only monies that come from sewer get spent on sewer and it stays within itself, separately accounted for. We have a separate one for, you'll see, for stormwater. We have a separate one for cable access. We have a separate one for the golf course, and a separate one for the Chelmsford Forum, the ice rink. So the first one is the sewer enterprise budget. You see the budget is $5.6 million for the upcoming year. The detail, again, on these budgets are also in that same Thick Green Book. Once you complete the pages for the operating budget, you'll see not only the capital budget, but you'll also see the detail for the enterprise budgets. In this case, again, this explains what a sewer enterprise fund, as I mentioned, is a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism. And when I say that, it's not just within the Town. We annually have to report our balance sheets and operations to the State for review and certification annually in order for us to basically issue fall tax bills at the end of the calendar year. So we are regulated and reported to and monitored by the State. In this case, the sewer enterprise budget increases by 4.82%, or $257,000. And you can see in the next slide, most of that in the sewer operation accounts for the increase in our treatment plant fee. All of Chelmsford Sewer disposal gets sent through the city of Lowell to the regional wastewater treatment facility that's owned by Lowell on 110 by the Drakehead Town Line, and that processes all the sewer effluent from Chelmsford, Lowell, Tewksbury, Drakehead, parts of Drakehead and parts of Tingsborough. And so again, we don't own the plant, we don't, we have a contract under the plant. The city of Lowell owns the plant, and they assess us for their, their operation costs, as well as their capital costs of funding that facility. As you can see, that's going up by $200,000. And then the debt service within the sewer for the sewer, our own sewer equipment and vehicles is going up by $92,000. We then move on, under Article 10, to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which is a budget of $1.7 million roughly. And in this case, the budget increase is just under 5% or $78,000. And as the slide indicates, people are less familiar with the stormwater aspect, where we maintain 95 miles of drain under the roads and culverts in the community, 45,000 catch basins and detention ponds and so forth. And this is also regulated by state and federal laws, and we have to perform required testing and reporting as part of the clean water initiatives of the state and federal government. So that's what occurs under this enterprise. The next one is the purchase of a dump truck for the stormwater operation. Again, this would be purchased by the Town and borrowed, but again, the purchase debt service for that gets paid for from this fund. And in this case, it'll be paid for over the next four years to allow the stormwater department to operate effectively, and also assist when the Town has snow removal operations, all equipment goes out, not only the highway, but sewer, stormwater, everything goes out there. Because one of the difficulties we're having as a community is, as well as the State, is the ability to get contractors to plow is more cumbersome and more expensive, because it's just not seen as desirous by today's workers. We then move on to the ice rink. This is more straightforward. The Town owns, has owned the ice rink now for decades, and it, we acquired it from the State after the University of Lowell had the Songus Arena for its operations. The Town contracts every five years for a licensed professional operation to manage and run the ice rink. In this case, the Town appropriates the money that we just received in that management fee to allow for expenses that the Town has as the owner of the facility. So again, the benefit of this is it doesn't incur any part of your tax bill for the Town to own and operate and provide the forum, which is used by the high school and others in the community. And then similarly, we have for Peg Access, which is cable, which is the group that's filming us tonight and provides cable television of municipal meetings, as well as events and others in the community. That is obviously funded not by the Town, but by the surcharge under state law on your cable and television invoices. We estimate that we'll be seeing about $577,000 in the upcoming year. That's actually a slight decrease in the current year's budget of about 1%, .5, about 1% or above $5,700. As more and more people cut the cord, is that balancing act between the rising cost of cable versus fewer subscribers that fund this operation for the telemedia. So they're, again, they're level staffed, and then depending upon their operations and what they need for equipment and so forth, but in this case, it's essentially a level service budget. We'll then move on to the golf course with enterprise. Similarly, in the 1990s, the Town purchased the golf course on Park Road to keep it as open space and for golf course operations. Again, Town contracts every five years for a private experienced golf course management company to run the Chelmsford Country Club operations. And again, it's kept separate and distinct from the property tax. And again, the $30,000 so that is raised there gets put into a fund in order to maintain the greens and irrigation systems and so forth, and if there's a balance left over at the end of the year, the money stays with that fund in cases of major expenditure that arises over time. Once that is done, we now move on to Article 15, which is one of these articles that's on what I mentioned earlier as the Consent Agenda. The Town also operates, in addition to the operating budget and these enterprise funds, we have what the State allows us to operate under what's called departmental revolving funds. And you can see the list there, senior citizen trip program, cemetery wreath decorations. What, as a revolving fund indicates, is it basically means that money comes in for services and is allowed to be expended by the Town directly for those services. And so basically, it's And so basically, it's meant to be self-funding. But we're required every year to, under state law, to fund the amount of those funds that, as an estimate of what those funds would be used for, in terms of the purpose in the year. So in this case, we anticipate the senior citizen trip thing won't run above $75,000. They run a respite care program in this building that could bring in, in terms of total revenue and expenses, $150,000 and so forth, in terms of the police cruiser communications equipment. That's basically the sale of police cruisers, when we trade the used cruisers in. The money gets put into this revolving account, and they use to purchase equipment for new cruisers, same thing for fire life safety, and so forth. The next article is another special fund, which is the Cemetery Improvement Development Fund. Here, people who purchase funds for burial at the town's burial grounds, you pay for that, as well as perpetual care. And then therefore, town meeting is the one that approves the expenditure of those funds for improvement of the cemetery. In this case, they're seeking a $50,000 transfer to do some paving and repair of drainage at the West Chelmsford Cemetery, and removing some hazardous trees across all the cemeteries. Again, this tends to be another consent item, because it tends not to be controversial, and it's sort of the course of doing business as prescribed by the state. Article 17 is property valuation services. This is a request, another revenue fund. And this request is for $160,000 from what's called the overlay surplus. And it's going to fund the property valuation services. And I mentioned earlier, the town reports financially on its operations to the state. We also assess all the properties in town, and that has to be reported and verified and matched by the state. And so they actually look at your assessment ratio versus sale ratio on a mass appraisal system, and you've got to be within a 10% variance. The idea is having a fair and equitable tax system. Part of that system requires the town to physically inspect every property every 10 years, and then to do a townwide revaluation every five years. We are at that point of cycle where this year and next year, we're hitting the five- and 10-year mark. So this year, we're requesting $160,000. You'll see the beginning of the portion article is to rescind the vote-taking last April. And that was because when we sought our tax rate, the vote wasn't authorized properly by the town, because the town had failed to get the assessors to declare the overlay surplus. And what overlay surplus is, in jargon, is the town sets aside, we assess $130 million in property taxes every year. There's an appeal process where residents and businesses can appeal their valuation. And if it's determined either by the Board of Assessors, or dispute area, determined by a court, or the appellate tax board, then the town has to provide refunds. So again, there's a balance there. And every year, the state looks at how the town funded it, what the balance is, and then if the town wants to expend that balance, it's called overlay surplus. And that's what we're using for a funding source to fund this property valuation service for the town. We now move into Article 18, which is kind of related to property assessment, because in this case, it's veterans exemptions. And it's a long-winded and worded way of saying, the state legislature last fall adopted what's known as the HERO Act, which provided new local options for municipalities to increase exemptions to veterans. It has to be brought for town meeting for approval. And in this case, basically, it's allowing the town to increase the veterans exemption amount that's specified by state law annually by the Consumer Price Index. So the idea is, you're trying to keep the value of the exemption, and the real value, as inflation increases by adjustment every year. So what happens is, is every January, the state declares the interest level for the CPI, and then they authorize the town to adjust the veterans exemption if the town votes to do so. In this case, it's only a $400 exemption. But if the town leaves it lax, it'll stay 400, as the value of 400 diminishes over time. We estimate the cost of this in the first year would be less than $5,000. And of course, the state doesn't fund any of it, you know, so they provide the rules and say, "You can do this, but it's on your own dime." And that's what we're doing, because we just, we think it's the appropriate thing to do. And we also see many of our neighboring comparable communities doing the same action. And then similarly, the next article is for senior exemptions. There are a variety of senior citizen exemptions under state law. And what we're doing here, similar to the veterans', is we're going to allow a consumer price adjustment for the senior exemptions annually. And again, these senior exemptions, in this case, are basically asset-dependent and income-dependent. And it's only a $175 exemption, as specified by state law in this instance. So again, the first year cost is going to be minor, but it's a way, again, of keeping it, you know, of value. And we are working with the assessors to see if there's more that we can do, because there are other levels of senior exemptions that we'll explore in future years. So, and again, there's no additional state reimbursement for this. We then, nearing the end of the financial articles, Article 20 is a request to appropriate $50,000 to fund and improve municipal operations. And why we put this article on, which is the first time we've done this, is we don't know what's ahead of us. But what we do know, based on our forecast, is we're going to have to look at everything. Because we know the situation in Washington is likely going to lead to a loss of revenue to the state, and also to the community. We also know that we can't keep pace under Proposition Two and a Half with inflation that's running 3.5%. Or, as you saw, on the health insurance, running well above that. And so, we don't know what we're going to encounter. And the legislature's doing the same thing, as they're adopting their, the House Representatives adopting their budget next week. And then it goes to the Senate, and then back to the governor, you know, by July. And the only thing we can do at this point in time is go on the information that we have, which is full of uncertainties, as we see what's happening. And so we thought it reasonable to set aside $50,000 to have available to the select board and the manager to address whatever may arise over the course of the year. And you can see, we gave examples, but none of these are required or been decided upon. It could be, we did look at the sale of recreational cannabis, that went down in flames at the ballot box, that's not going to happen. We could look at regional public safety dispatching. We could look at how we run our solid waste and recycling program. We could look at even something that pertains to the residents but isn't the town, which is the water districts. The town of Chelmsford, 36,000 people, runs three water districts. The town of Baroka, that's 40-plus thousand people, runs one water department. The town of Tewksbury runs one water department. Drakehead runs two districts. And so the question has arisen that in the year 2025, does it make sense to maintain that structure? Or should the town, which represents all of the residents in the three districts, look with outside assistance to see if there are efficiencies that could be gained by consolidation and oversight of the three districts? I didn't say the word takeover. I said the word consolidation. So that's an example. Again, we don't know if we're going to go there, the select board hasn't made any decisions. But these are the type of issues, because here's the problem that we have, and you'll hear this a little bit in the beginning of the meeting. We can't, we can't, this year coming forward, we can't maintain the services that we have. And we're at the point now where it's going to get more difficult, because we're in a situation with a very expensive labor market, a very expensive inflationary market, perhaps cuts coming from the federal and state government, and perhaps even a recession. No one knows. And all we can do is try to adjust it in real time. And then there'll be discussions in the months ahead amongst the town officials, and ultimately coming back, in many cases, the town meeting, of how do we move forward? And many of you have seen this happen in communities around us, like in Westford, they had major cuts a year ago. The town of Drakehead is running some real issues. Towns next to us, in Pepperell and so forth. And even in towns that aren't at the levy limit, like Lowell and Baroka, are trying to figure out, how much can they really raise taxes, even if they have the ability to, in terms of what can the residents afford? So those are the questions that we have. Did you have a question?
Yeah. If there were ever sort of one wire, the ones that would have to go, the same thing for seven, that's the, you know, that, we have to have a license for them.
Right, we haven't gotten to that level of detail, right. Everywhere to go there, right, right. The town doesn't establish the water district, it's established by the state legislature. And in one point, there were more districts. There was a South Water District. But the problem is, is nobody has looked at the issue in 35 years. And so we don't know, but we think it's worth looking at, or I think it's worth looking at. And the problem is, like any other merger or acquisition or consolidation, there's going to be winners and losers, and somebody's going to have to figure out what's fair. Because what we do know is particularly, is right now, they're addressing some unforeseen signs, in terms of dealing with the PFAS issue for treatment plants. We know, and we're aware of the concerns that residents have with their electric bills, their gas bills for heat, and their water bills, because of the realities of running these systems today. So that's why we're saying that might be something that the town might look at, because it may offer efficiencies. It's not saying you can just merge the three districts and they'll run together. But the question becomes, why isn't there one oversight board for the entire system? Why do they run three billing systems, three superintendents, three, you know, three of everything, as opposed to a consolidated larger thing that may provide greater expertise and experience? So we don't know. And again, we're not even saying we're going there. But those are the type of questions that the town has to look at for its residents, whether it's in the case of water, or it's the case of dispatch. In other words, we run a standalone dispatch center 24/7. Next to us, the town of Tewksbury and Drakehead run one unified system. So the question Chelmsford might look at is, do we join that system? Or do we go to a town like Tingsborough and say, "Hey, we'll dispatch for you"? Those are the type of things that, again, in the business world, are commonplace, but tend not to be as commonplace in government. And that's what we're saying, is we are at that level, because as you'll see in the books and the publications, we don't see how we can sustain the level of expertise and operations the town has under 2.5% increase. Because the labor market's more expensive than 2.5%. And when we hire services, they're more than 2.5%. Never mind the health insurance being double digits and so forth. So those are the questions that we'll look at under this article. Again, yes, and again, we're not here to debate the article, we're just trying to explain what we're asking for.
We have the work, so.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep. Yeah, that's how it would be. We wouldn't, we don't have the in-house expertise. And this was done back in the late 80s, at the most recent time. And my predecessor at the time thought it would be a great idea for the town to take over the three districts. I'm not going there, because I can't sit here and say that the town could do a better job than an independent board. But I personally think there is a, it is worth looking at why there wouldn't be one independent board, just like we have one housing authority in town. Anyway, once we complete that article, we then move on to foster care reimbursement. Again, this is when you're looking in the mattress, you know, and the couch for all kinds of spare change. And in this case, the superintendent came across a possible source of federal funding, which is called foster care reimbursement, which provides federal reimbursement currently for transportation of children under foster care. And if the town accepts this, we might be able to obtain 20% reimbursement for foster care transportation expenses. We think the revenue that might come from this might be $25,000 or $30,000 per year. But on the other hand, why are we leaving $25,000 or $30,000 on the table? So that's what's being requested there. Under Article 32, this is an amendment to the town's general bylaws regarding the budget process. I submitted this article. The town charter specifies the budget process in terms of when I have to release a budget in time for timely consideration for town meeting. What that specifies is, is that the preliminary budget by the school committee has to be submitted to the town manager at least 90 days prior to the spring session of town meeting, to enable the town manager to enable the effect of the school department's requested appropriation upon the town budget. However, you go to the town's bylaws under the charter, it says, "The town manager shall submit to the Finance Committee a proposed budget within 90 days." Well, 90 days, 90 days doesn't give any consideration. So what I'm proposing here is to allow the town manager 80 days. So give the town manager 10 days from the release of the school budget under the charter, which the, what the charter intends to is to allow the manager to consider the school department's request prior to the release of the budget. And basically, why I put this calendar is how it would work in reality. It wouldn't, it wouldn't alter any of the work by the Finance Committee or by town meeting. And this is generally how our session works. You start at the end of town meeting, so next year, it'll be on April 27. I would release the manager's budget on February 5. The school department would release it on the 3rd, so I actually could see it before I released the final budget. And then the Chauvet Tech releases its budget at the end of January. And then the governor submits, the governor's proposed state budget by the end of January. So you can see how compact that period is, and why this year proved quite difficult to do that, when basically, the school budget was released after the manager, myself, released the town budget, not knowing what was in it, which is not the intent of the charter, nor a rational way of doing the budget. And that's generally what you see in other communities. So if that's approved or acted upon, we'll then go to the next article, which is dog license fees. We're proposing to increase dog license fees by roughly $5 for individual licenses. Again, it's to keep time to what it costs us to run the animal control officer and run the licensing program by the town. And then similarly, as I mentioned, we're doing a seal of weights and measures. And so again, what that is, is those are the scales and gas pumps and so forth. So when you go to the gas pump and you see that emblem and seal on there, the town has to go out and inspect all the gas pumps every year. We similarly go through all the scales, whether it's at supermarkets or jewelry stores. And also, we go do all the price scanners, to make sure that people are being fairly charged for what they're purchasing. So it's an annual inspection process, as well as a complaint-driven process. And again, we're trying to keep the fees up to the commencement, to the town's cost of providing that service with an inspector, as well as the equipment and training that goes into that operation. We then move on to the Community Preservation Fund, which is Article 25. This, again, is an article, traditional. The first thing we do is appropriate money into the required reserves under the fund. We also pay the debt service under the fund, as well as the expense of the community preservation. As you can see, we're anticipating almost $1.6 million in the Community Preservation Fund tax surcharge. The estimated state revenue is roughly a quarter of a million dollars, so they'll get $1.8 million. We have to put roughly, you can see the 10% of the $1.5 million into the three required appropriations under the law, and then a general budgeted reserve. And then we have to pay off the debt service for previously approved projects, as they're listed there. The FAR column is a date that the projects are fully paid off, but it goes to issues such as Robert Field, Roberts Field, the Chelmsford Woods Housing Authority project on Littleton Road, the open space acquisitions at Warren Pole, Kulis, and then the upcoming work at Chelmsford Arms, and the proposed, that you'll see in the upcoming article, for the Town Center Utilities Suppression. And that brings us to the one community preservation article that I just mentioned. And this is a request to use funds for the Community Preservation Fund to suppress the second phase of the Town Center Utilities Suppression through the center towards the library. If you've gone by the Town Common, a decade ago, the town did the first phase. All the utility poles are removed from in front of the Old Town Hall, the common area. The second phase is basically moved from there, through the common, past the Oddfellows Building and Fishbones to the Adams Library. Why it has taken this long is, is this is funded by, under the state law, which is antiquated, it's funded by... it's funded by, and this is what it looks like, this is what we want to get rid of. This is funded under the state law, which went back to the nineties. When the town commenced this, planning for this, it was a surcharge on your electrical bills and a surcharge on landline phone bills. Well, the problem is the law didn't adapt when landlines went out of fashion. And so what's happened and why the project hasn't advanced is we have plenty of funds to do the national grid. In fact, the town set off the surcharge about eight years ago in the national grid portion because we're sitting on roughly $4 million. But we don't have funding and we can't collect sufficient funding to do the project from landlines. Basically, under the state allowed surcharge on landlines, the town would collect less than $70,000 per year. And national grid, I'm sorry, Verizon is not going to undertake a project that's going to cost upwards to a million, six million, seven on a payback system that gets $70,000 per year. And that's why it's been stalemated. Working with our legal counsel and looking at other communities and working with the town's historical commission and the community preservation commission, what we're looking to do under this article is to appropriate funding from the Community Preservation Fund to fund the Verizon portion of the project to suppress the utilities because we cannot legally expand the national grid monies on the Verizon and vice versa. So that's what's being requested under this article. And then it'll probably take a year to fully design, and then you probably see construction. If it were to move forward, probably in '27. But that's how that would move. The next article is a citizen petition, yes, yes, Padraig. Yeah. Yep. Yep. Yeah, that's a gas pine in the street, yeah. And then they'll resurface the road when it's done. No, 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 we're resurfacing. And the challenge here, why it's so expensive to do this, there's a brick that runs under the center, many of you are familiar, that goes from, and that's what makes it an expensive venture to bring those lines through. And then what happens is, is the businesses then have to connect from their own property to the right-of-way at their expense. And so that's what takes a while for the engineering and design work to be completed. From there, we then move on to a citizen petition article that was submitted by Mary Donovan, and she will present probably the first thing on Thursday evening out of consideration for her. And she wants the town to establish a pet cemetery. And basically, she hasn't identified where this would be, and she hasn't really specified a funding mechanism on how it could be self-sustaining. But this is her vision. And because that's where it's at at this point in time, town council has basically said that what town meeting can really do, because you haven't identified a parcel of land, because, or the financial mechanism, is basically it'd be a vote of support by town meeting, basically saying, does the town meeting want the select board and the town manager to undertake the efforts to identify a suitable parcel of land and a financial plan for a pet cemetery? So that's what will be considered under this article. And what we know, what we do know is, the cemetery commission does not allow, you know, burial of animals at the town's public burial grounds for humans. The town has never had a pet cemetery, most towns do not. The town of Littleton has one, it's not very utilized. And that'll be the discussion that you'll hear at town meeting on, probably, like you said, likely Thursday evening, expected. And from there, we now move on to zoning article amendments. The first one, and we're joined, yes. Yep. I hear different things. I mean, some say you can't bury your dog in your yard or your cat. I've been involved in government for 35 years, but I've never had heard of anyone prosecuted for burying their animal in their yard. Yeah. No, there's no zoning prohibition in town that does that. That's noisy. Hopefully, it isn't, that fan isn't that noisy on Monday night, it's hard.
No, we'll have to shut it off.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, we now move on to the beginning of the zoning articles. I'm going to take the first one, and then Chris LaValley, the chair of the planning board, will take the balance. And the reason that I'm taking the first one is, is I submitted this one. And this is a request to amend our zoning bylaws in the Route 129 Overway District. There's the language changes, but here's a summary. The area out on 129 was rezoned recently to allow for amenities nine years ago. And the only amenity that has come in there is Press Cafe. And they've been quite successful, but despite this success in the years they've been there, no one else has come in. One of the requirements is, under our bylaws, is that it has to be, it cannot be a standalone restaurant. It has to be basically what you call an end cap, which is what Press Cafe is. Remember, they're at the end of that building, and then there's Trident Systems and such in the building. So this proposal would allow for standalone drive-throughs. But it only can be located on Berwicka Road from Alpha Road to the Berwicka Town Line and at the end of Mill Road, right near Berwicka Road on 129. And we would only allow three. We already have one, Press Cafe, and therefore, two more would meet the requirements under the bylaw, the maximum. And we also would allow expanded hours of operations. And why I presented this is twofold. One is, we were addressed by property owner. You can see is this area right here. Mill Road, right at 129, that's where the old Lighthouse School was for the last few years. Before that was Life Links. It's a vacant office building, and they're having a difficult time tenanting the facility. And what's unique about this parcel is, it's at the edge of our business corridor. Again, there's the off-ramp, the building has on-ramp three sides of it when you come off of 129. Press Cafe is across the street of Berwicka Road. And the idea there would be, you tear the building down, and they would build two standalone drive-throughs to allow the operation to take place. And what we understand is, 90-plus percent of the traffic would come from Berwicka Road, and obviously, a significant portion of that from Route 3. Because on this side of Route 3, from Drum Hill to the Burlington Town Line end of Route 3, there's really no convenient place to get off the highway in close proximity to stay in your car and get, you know, a bite to eat. And that's what we're seeing now in the post-pandemic market is, people don't want to leave their vehicles, and they want to drive through the Press Cafe drive-throughs or the Panera drive-throughs and so forth. And that's what's being proposed in this area. And again, we restrict it to the area in Chelmsford that would just be from Alpha Road to the Chelmsford Town Line. And as I said, we had a business that particularly interested in this, but we can't designate it for a business. We designate that corridor of business. And then the final thing under this is, the town planning board, this wouldn't just be by right. A business would have to, like anyone else, have to go to the planning board for a special permit, much like, this is the CVS in Chelmsford Center. The first, the planning board has the ability to regulate the exterior appearance of buildings. And that's what they were able to do with CVS, make it look more colonial, more appropriate appearance as opposed to what you see more commonly in the standard CVS design. And so that right would still be retained by the planning board too, in terms of the zoning, the exterior appearance and so forth in this sector of town. The beauty of this sector of town is, particularly at Mill Road and Berwicka Road, is there's already a traffic signal, there's already dedicated turn lanes. And that's why I think this warrants the town's consideration. From there, we'll now go to a general outdoor lighting bylaw, which Chris LaValley and Kelly Beatty, who developed this bylaw, for the town's consideration. Yes, Padraig. Yes. Yes. And still by special permit, yeah. Okay, so I'm going to turn the podium over. You're just advancing, I can actually get to your slide as opposed to making you go through all this.
Thanks. So as Paul mentioned, my name is Chris LaValley. I'm the chair of the planning board. Kelly Beatty is going to actually be presenting the first Article 29. And the second Article 30 is essentially a companion article to that. So if the first article passes, then what we would do is vote on the second article to remove the old zoning lighting bylaw that's in there now. So I'll let Kelly Beatty give you an overview of what he's going to be presenting at town meeting.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. In the year 2000, a quarter century ago, town meeting approved unanimously an outdoor lighting bylaw, and that has been on the books since then. Unfortunately, it was a fairly simple bylaw and almost unenforceable in terms of its construction. The premise was, if you have a light that's sufficiently bright, you need to point it down. That was it, with some exemptions. No mechanism for enforcement, or it was a complaint-driven bylaw, as most zoning bylaws are. Fast forward 25 years, we have LEDs everywhere. And so the growth of light in town has been obvious to me. I do, I get involved with this a lot. Some of you know that my background's astronomy. But I also work with lighting professionals and other dark sky involvement throughout the state. So I have been looking forward to doing this for a couple of years now. There are four components. First of all, the reason it's a general bylaw and not a zoning bylaw is twofold. First of all, by being a general bylaw, I can say that every light has to be conforming, even if it's already existing. And I soften that by, we soften it by putting in a 10-year grace period, if you will, or sunset clause, to bring all those lights into conformity. The second reason for a general bylaw is that it would capture segments of the lighting universe here in town that were otherwise not involved. Municipal lighting, the utility lights along Chelmsford Street. And so those would also come under that compliance. What is different in terms of enforcement is that we now will be able to define what a non-conforming light is. So for residences, essentially, the bylaw is unchanged in the sense that if you have a light that's sufficiently bright, the same amount of light, it must be pointed down. What's different this time is that if you create, if you have a light that is lighting your yard, and you're welcome to light your yard, but if it's extending beyond your property line, we now have a way to measure how much is too much. And the enforcement of that would fall to a new definition called a lighting standards officer. This is almost certainly going to be someone already on the building inspectors, building services staff, who would be able to determine quickly with a simple measurement whether it's too much. There would be no argument. It would be either in, either conforming or not. The, for businesses, it's a little bit a higher standard. I've been working with the Chelmsford Business Association to try to come up with a fair way to apportion this. A lot of businesses have installed some really bright lights. We want those to brought under control. You've had, you've seen some really great examples of what good lighting looks like in town. Chelmsford Plaza is a great example. The Summer Street Mall recently switched out its lights. Those are very well-controlled lights. I've worked with the Business Association. They are very much supportive of what we're trying to do here. On the municipal side, our existing street lights have been in place for 12 years, and so too are the area lights that light our schools and parking lots and so forth. Over time, those will need to be replaced. And so the goal here is, within this 10-year period, to at least start, if not complete, when those get replaced, to do it better, right, better and more environmentally controlled. The last piece of this is the utilities. And you, I pay attention to this, maybe you don't. All of those lights that are mounted on utility poles along our streets to illuminate the parking lots of businesses and so forth are owned by National Grid. And they're all what we call high-pressure sodium. It's an outdated technology. And sooner than later, National Grid is going to come through and replace those. And we want to have some control over that process. And this bylaw would allow that as well, not only allow it, but require it. And I think that's about what I want to mention at this point. I plan to have a little bit more detail available for town meeting. It may seem complicated because it's involving numbers, but I assure you that it's the best of common sense and best practice brought together, taking the best of the old bylaw along with the new standards that the lighting industry has come forward with. I should mention that I've consulted two lighting professionals on this, and they both really enjoy, really like what we've done here.
I have a couple of questions with the.
I'm sorry? So sports lighting is not being regulated specifically. There are some national standards that are alluded to in the bylaw, saying to the extent possible, you should follow those standards, but they're not required. What is required is that for stadium, for any sports facility or outdoor athletic facility, that those lights be turned off within one hour of the completion of play or by 10:00 PM, whichever comes first.
Another question or comment, maybe. You mentioned a good example of Summer Street and another.
Chelmsford Plaza, yes.
Maybe for town meeting, if you can, and I don't know how easy is it in the presentation to show another property or another location that is not compliant or not there versus this. Obviously, we can't see it sufficiently that it lights off.
Right, right. You know, I don't want to make any enemies here. There are literally hundreds of places in town. A point to be made here is that, you know, maybe they didn't know about it, or maybe they ignored it, or what. But any property that has an LED that doesn't conform to the old bylaw is not conforming and never was. And so I don't want to make any enemies, you know, by pointing out, I could show you some really bad ones, but I think it's best to maybe show the good ones, as you point. I do have an example, I do have a before-after example that is. Yeah, or I have one that I will show, it's from Nantucket. It's safely far away. I'm sorry?
Could you explain in your analysis, what does it impact to the existing lights? You know, how many people will have to trade their lights in?
So the, you want to talk about specifically residential or generally? Well, the residential, the standard had been, if it's more than 1,000 lumens, that's the way we measure how much light a light bulb puts out, then it needs to be pointed down. That was in the existing bylaw that's now a quarter century old, and that's the same standard this time too, that's not changed. The town does make some recommendations, but not regulations, for what a reasonable maximum amount of light would be and what a reasonable, what we call color temperature, how blue that light is, should be. The trend in lighting has been to use lower and lower color temperatures. This is a number, it's actually a measurement of degrees in the Kelvin scale. The lower that number, the warmer the hue of the light. You've probably gone to a store and picked out warm white, cool white light bulb fixtures over the years. This is a more numerical way of specifying that. So for homeowners, that part has not changed, it's the same. What might be different is, if you have landscape lighting, the new bylaw would require you to have it off between midnight and 6:00 AM, which I think most people would agree is a reasonable thing. Is that helping you? No, 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 it would, it'd still be complaint-driven. It would still be complaint-driven. But what we have now done is if. But what we have now done is, if you and a neighbor, or if you and a business have a disagreement on how bright the lights are that are shining on your property, we now have a way to quantify what that is. It's not just somebody guessing one way or the other.
Question I have is about the nighttime lights. You said nighttime lights have to be turned out. What about solar, and for landscape lighting, what about solar lights that spend the whole night on light?
Yeah, her question was, what about lights that are designed to stay on all night, like solar landscape lighting? I think common sense would argue that if it's not a very bright light, that it's not going to really rise to the level of something that needs to be dealt with. Obviously, I don't expect people to go out and buy new landscape lighting that turns off automatically at midnight, though such things do exist. Really, we're looking for, we're looking for the most egregious situations, where a neighbor has like an extremely bright floodlight that they're trying, and you probably all come across this, that they're trying to light up their entire backyard all night, every night. That's 4,125 hours every year, by the way, in case you needed to know that. And so this gives a mechanism that is not just guesswork. There's an actual formalism for determining whether that exceeds, the overspill onto your property is excessive or not. Thank you all very much, and I look forward to seeing you at town meeting.
Okay, so as I mentioned, the next article.
He's got the whole thing? Oh, wait, wait, he's got the, if you don't mind, let's show the before and after. Back, yes. This is a school in Nantucket. Those lights are creating a lot of glare. All they did was point them down, and the result was that.
What's the health safety benefit of getting rid of this?
The health safety benefit is many, especially the blue light component of a lot of LEDs, which we didn't have to worry about before, but LEDs put out a lot of blue light, affects your circadian rhythm, is affecting pollinators, is causing the greatest amount of sky.
It's not happening with this amount of light.
I'm sorry?
It's not happening to that many people with that amount of light.
It's happening to all of us.
Does it have a detrimental effect?
Yes, the, the, I mean.
How many other towns, how much does the state endorse this, falls in this figure at the state level?
There is a bill in the legislature to do this at the state level. The problem is that a lot, the state can only really control state stuff. This is, this is something that, there are more than 60 towns in Massachusetts right now that have outdoor lighting bylaws of one sort or another. Chelmsford was one of the first. And as time has gone on, and we learn more about the science of lighting, and the effect of glare, and this blue light, and its effect on so many aspects of the nocturnal environment, that our ability to make specific recommendations gets better.
I'm going to ask a question on the blue lighting. As we age and we get cataracts, soft, the lower scale Kelvin, 2,500, 3,000, becomes ineffective for night vision. Pretty ineffective for people elderly that have cataracts.
Actually, it works the other way around.
I'm sorry. I had cataract surgery. I had to put in bluer and bluer lights to see effectively at night.
This is after the cataracts?
Before the cataract surgery. I'm saying, we're also dealing with an aging population, and we need to accommodate people, especially with vision issues, and we can't just say, we need to take a bigger view here and not just say, blue light is bad.
I don't want to take everybody's time. Let's have a discussion afterwards. The real culprit is twofold. Yes, it is about the blue wavelengths. They scatter more in your eye, and the reason that you needed more blue light before you had your cataracts removed, is that it's the blue light that's most rapidly absorbed and doesn't get to your retina. The second part of that is that when you have older people with eye vision, that blue light scatters in your eye. The glare creates, you've all encountered a car coming at you with a new-style headlight, and how bright the glare is from that can almost be disabling to you. It is the blue component of that, because blue light scatters roughly 16 times more inside your eye, creates more glare inside your eye than a red wavelength does.
So is it a blue light issue, or is that an aiming that correctly, and not having SUVs with light scattering at, you know, three feet above?
Well, I'm not.
It's complex. It's not just, it's not just a boogeyman.
I agree, it's complex. I'm not empowered to control the headlight issue. What I am empowered to control is the glare issue, which is the primary, as you saw here, it, turning those lights down so that the light is on the target area is the easiest, simplest, easiest way to control this problem, regardless of what the color temperature is. Yes, ma'am?
When I was reading through the bylaw regarding the demonstration of compliance, it requires either the lighting standards officer or the planning board to ensure compliance and have the expertise, or otherwise have a third party hired by whoever's doing their development. Is there an expectation of extra cost for the town, or extra, excuse me, cost for the third parties that are doing their permitting?
So in terms of the residential, we don't expect there to be any additional cost, because as Kelly mentioned, the determination is very easily done with a handheld device that the building inspector or anyone can go out and measure.
But that's at nighttime, which is after hours, usually?
Yeah, but that's, as Kelly mentioned, that's the current bylaw as well. So anyone in the current bylaw can, can drive a complaint, and then the building inspector would have to go out at night to determine. The difference with the new bylaw is that now he's empowered to take a device out and actually measure it, as opposed to just guessing how bright it would be. On the commercial side, when new buildings are in, coming before the planning board, we have lighting standards that we do enact, and just like with any other study that's done, the applicant pays for those studies and analyses as well. So we would have more standards to enact and enable us to enforce in the planning board process.
I want to hear it.
You mentioned specifically the demonstration test. If you look closely, that's for fixtures in the public right-of-way. That is, I mentioned that these are the light fixtures on utility poles. Certainly, the town's street lights are part of that, and these days, when a town replaces its street lights, most often, they do a demonstration project, much so that citizens can decide what they want. But in this specific case, I'm anticipating National Grid replacing all of the existing lights that they have, that businesses and other people lease from them, with high-powered LEDs, and we want some control over that process.
Kelly, are you, many streets in Chelmsford, for the last 15, 20 years, have already converted to LED lights. Are you going to, is the proposition that under this, under this ambit of this bylaw, would you move them from the more whitish, bluer white LED to more warmer yellow glow as possible?
That would be the plan. I had conversations with Christine Clancy and also Paul. The timetable for replacing LEDs is of order 20 years, so that.
When it happens, it happens. Yeah, understood.
All right, so as I mentioned, Article 30 is a companion article to this one. So if the 29 passes, then we would also vote on 30 to remove the aspect of lighting from the current zoning. All right, going on to the other zoning articles. Article 31 is related to some general, simple zoning changes that we are proposing. These came out of the Attorney General Office review of our MBTA zoning bylaws. The office looked at all of our bylaws to make sure there were no conflicts, and there were three potential areas that the Attorney General. There it is. Three areas that the Attorney General's Office flagged as potential issues. The first one is erosion control. Second one is waivers and considerations of fiscal impact. And the third one is the definition of family. We had our town council review them. We looked at the possible changes that they're recommending, and we found that no changes are needed in the erosion control, but actually, we did need to change some items in the school impacts, specifically related to how projects impact schools. Unfortunately, as a state law, we cannot, as a planning board, consider the negative or positive impacts of our, of a project on the school system. As much as we would want to, we cannot. So that was actually called out in a couple areas, where we actually had it as one of the criteria. We had to remove that. And what we did is, for the other areas where it did mention the impacts on services to the town, we actually explicitly excluded the school system from consideration. The second area is the family definition. The Attorney General's Office suggested that our current definition may cause some equal housing potential litigation, so they suggested a pretty generic definition that was already accepted by the Attorney General's Office from Brookline, so that's the one we're proposing. Any questions on that article before I go forward?
So summary is equal equity or equal opportunity, and the previous one was the rule of impact to school from high-density housing composition.
Yeah, yeah. Well, any project, actually, whether it's a commercial, multifamily.
If once someone wanted to set up a recreational marijuana center right next to the school, we could not consider it?
Yep. The impacts to the school system, usually on the fiscal side, are what's considered in that. That might be a little different in terms of health.
But by removal and not being specific to that, the fact that it was limited in fiscal?
Yeah, those are really around the fiscal impacts of services, so.
Is that somewhere in the text of somewhere in the section?
It's in the section.
Okay, that it is related to the fiscal?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
On the family definition one, it says, it looks like it will eliminate any upper limit in the number of non-located people that can live in a single wall. So if somebody buys a three-bedroom ranch straight across the street from me, I can tell they have 10 bros over there living in that, in a house.
No, because by building code, you're limited to the number of people per bedroom house, so.
Okay, so there's a separate bit of code that sort of reduces that.
Yeah. We're just not limiting it in our definition of a family unit. So Article 32, I'm not going to go through all of it tonight, but I'm going to summarize it by saying, essentially, the, these changes are brought about by FEMA developing new standards that they are now requiring for all bylaw and ordinance reviews. In the past, we've kind of been not implementing some of these changes, as with many municipalities across the state. They have not been to restrict on imposing these changes, but they are now tightening a little bit more. So in order to stay current with the National Flood Insurance Program that we all take advantage of in some form or another in this town, we need to make sure that we have these changes in place. So the, the DCR Flood Hazard Management Program from the state assisted us in developing, taking the state standard bylaws that were in place, and then applying them to our bylaws where we had gaps. We did an analysis with them on where there were gaps, where we had to fill with the state bylaw. We just essentially took the state wording and put it in. Local bylaws are allowed to be more restrictive than the state, so in places where we were more restrictive, and there were only a couple, we did keep that wording as well in the bylaw to not loosen it up. And they also, at the same time, updated their flood map for mainly the, I believe it was the Merrimack. Yeah, the current Merrimack River watershed is where they updated their map. The prior map updates in 2014 were focused on the Concord River watershed. These are the Merrimack River watershed. So we're updating the bylaw text and the map itself. Yes?
Is anything added that's more stringent than required?
Nope. Anything that was more strict than the state law was just left in. We didn't add any more strict areas.
Is it just along the Merrimack and the Concord River adjacencies, or are we considering other areas?
There are other areas that are part of that FEMA floodplain map that are impacted by these bylaws, but they didn't update those areas. The only updated, the Merrimack River watershed areas for the map itself. So the boundaries may have changed up or down. If you can go onto their website, I put the link in the slides. It's a very interactive website for the map, so you can take a look at specific locations and see where the boundaries have changed, based on their updated study data. So we'd be adopting their updated map and their updated bylaws.
Maybe out of a curiosity question, sorry. We do have a lot of wetlands in town that we manage. We do have a lot of wetlands that we manage in town, and if weather patterns change over time, and lots and lots of water happens, then properties adjacent to those wetlands or other mechanisms that we have to drain water from the roadways and other places, we might see an issue around there?
Yeah, and that's something the DPW and the Conservation Commission are looking at, and they're constantly commenting about how the maps are using outdated information, and even the stormwater regulations are using data that is not as current as the current storm patterns. So that is a general problem that all of the groups are trying to address.
So how is this impacting people's insurance?
So if we adopt the bylaw, it follows the state and federal guidelines, so it shouldn't impact insurance at all. If we don't adopt the bylaws, then the insurance could be impacted because we don't have the right bylaws in place, or the right mapping. So it could impact the town's ability to be part of that insurance program.
Are there any significant changes in man's, in security or healthcare?
No, the changes are pretty basic. No significant changes. It's, there's not much in there.
Any potential for changes to changes on the federal level about what, when and if FEMA, the definition of FEMA?
Good question, and I have no idea.
You mentioned that you read the map, did it bring in more property than what?
I don't know overall if it was more or less, but I know some boundaries did expand and some boundaries did shrink. So there are some changes.
And so houses that are there, have they affected if they wanted to develop?
No, I don't believe so.
You were talking about readying, telling them, for extra liability and type of, that might be?
Yeah, I mean, it's something that any of the insurance companies would have to keep an eye on, but the boundaries are constantly changing and updating, so it is potentially possible that a property that wasn't in the floodplain is now in the floodplain, and vice versa.
We just got a couple articles to go. The first one is Article 33. This is for easements for electric vehicle charging stations. And why this is before the town is that the town obtained a $2.24 million grant because the federal state is throwing out money for electric vehicle charging stations as part of future efforts. So there's no cost to the town. And what we're proposing to do is put these charging stations at five locations, the town offices, the Adams Library, the Senior Center, Vinyl Square, and Roberts Field. How it works under state law is the select board has the right to grant easements independently within the town right of way. So utility easement, so forth, natural gas, whatever in the town's, in the right of way of roadways, the selectman can grant. When it's on town property under state law, we have to go to the town meeting for approval to grant easements, basically for the infrastructure to support these lines. So again, outside this building here, you can see there's work that would be proposed by, to put trenching and the support infrastructure in there. So we need to have town meeting authorize the select board on behalf of the town to grant that permission in National Grid to perform the work. And then similarly, at Roberts Field, Vinyl Square, the Adams Library, and then finally the town offices. So that's what's taking place on this article. And then the final article in the warrant is a street acceptance, and that's Article 33. Yes.
Previous article. What protections do we have for those parking spots that will be electric, enabled from not being occupied or by being mistreated by people who we have seen people park their cars just?
Yeah, the town controls what parking is on town, on town private property. It's not, you know, these are town private, this is town-owned property, so the town can put signage and just like any private business owner can. So that's how that would take place. Yes?
The easement will allow the units to be put there.
Yes.
Are they going to be for fee units? Who's?
Yes, they're, they're paid for by fee, by the people who, you have to use your swipe card, and then they're the ones who pay. The town's not providing, yeah. We're providing the locations. It's, yeah, we have them, we have currently fast charging stations at the Forum, for example, and so forth. So we provide the locations. No, we're not providing, we're not subsidizing it, the operation. Yes?
So with all the, the grants that are being abruptly canceled, is there any chance we could start down this path and do work that we're on the hook for paying for?
No, no, we wouldn't be, we're not responsible at all. We're basically, if the grant funding gets pulled, we, we have no obligation as a town to, to pick up the balance of cost. Okay, and then, yes?
Is there any percentage ceiling as to how many spaces can be converted without leaving fewer spaces for non-weather curves?
I'm not aware of fixed percent, and I think it's going to change over time, depending upon where the industry goes. I mean, but, but at this point, you know, we've, we've, you know, we have, I guess, with the early generation electric vehicle charging stations at the library, the town hall, and so forth, and they tend to be lightly utilized. We'll see with the faster charging ones, but also they wouldn't remain as long, so we'll, we'll see where that goes. Yes?
Just curious, with the grant funds that you've had up there, is that taken care of with these electric charging stations that are proposed, the remainder of the funds?
Yes, yeah, the town, the town is making no contribution to this.
But that's for, what is it, six courts at five locations, so 30 of them, and that will be, that 2.24 million will take care of all of that.
Yes.
No more, that's just.
Right, exactly. And then the, the next article is Article 34. This is a street acceptance. Again, under state law, town meeting has to vote to adopt street acceptances. And here, it's an extension to Woodbine Street, and it's, and it's the white, as you, Woodbine is near the Market Basket Plaza where Anton's Cleaners is, or across from Finchway. And the DPW is out doing drainage work out there and as part of the drainage and so forth. As we remember a year ago, for some of you who've been here, we found out that a portion of Parkhurst Road wasn't accepted, or we have a portion of Woodbine Street that was never accepted by the town. And why the town wants to accept it is it then adds to our inventory, which we get the gas tax money back to the town based on your road mileage. And then the last article that I have, and John Souzer, our finance director, has come up, but this is the article we passed over on the Capitol. So we'll, we'll go back and let John produce the Capitol budget.
On, on Woodbine Street, what segment of the, what segment of the whole street are we accepting?
Just the endpoint of, of the street, I believe it's.
A hundred feet or something?
Yeah, exactly. It's a very small area of the roadway. But again, every little bit helps in terms of the, you know, road inventories. So John, I'll introduce John Souzer, our finance director, for the final article this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to provide you with an overview of the Capitol plan for the coming fiscal year. So on this slide, this summarizes everything by functional area. You can see that some of the most significant investments are in the areas of our school buildings, public works, and then community services. And so the Capitol plan includes 19 projects, and we'll take a quick look at these in more detail. This shows the overall financing plan. So we have, we have a, a small amount, it's just over 27,000 of recaptured funds, which are funds that are remaining from prior-year projects where there's a balance, the projects completed, and it may have been slightly under budget for certain reasons. So what this, we're allowed to, under state law, to recapture those funds. And it just affrays the amount that we need to borrow by a small amount, you can see. So the amount that the town would borrow, if town meeting authorizes this, is just over 5.94 million. And so the first plan, the first project that we have is, actually, this is going to look very familiar to everyone. It's the hall that we're all gathered in this evening and, and the kitchen area as well. You may recall seeing the first phase of this in a prior fiscal Capitol plan. This is to completely redo the whole floor. You can see that this building was underwent extensive renovations in the late 1980s, and this is to replace all of the remaining floor tile, which is over 30 years old. So this is the second phase of this. The next project involves libraries, and actually, this is for Adams Library. So if you've ever visited, you know that the parking lot is not in the best shape. The building, the parking lot was last, it's had some repairs over the years, but the pavement's essentially over 20 years old. And the cost to redo all the pavement and install granite curbs, et cetera, is 365,000. I do want to mention that our Public Works Director, when she appeared before the Capitol Planning Committee, was, we were able to achieve a savings if we do this parking lot project in conjunction with one that we'll see next or upcoming for the police station of 25,000. So this is the lower price of, with the 25,000 savings per parking lot. Yes?
Comment on the previous Capitol, just sure, sure everything's been taken care of, but that's also a location, a parking lot where the EV charging upgrades are going in. And I'm assuming that in the future, maybe it's the next 20 years, and if there's new cars, new G, new SUVs that are electric and others, hopefully, the segment where the car, the new electric charging needs to go a bit more reinforced, because usually it's street-facing, sidewalk-facing.
Oh, yeah, it's something I can bring up to Public Works. I know this is actually, another improvement that they made out there is, in a previous Capitol plan, was the removal of the retaining wall that was leaning into the street and, or towards the sidewalk, I should say. So this next project involves, you know, as the library uses a number of computers for both staff and for patrons, and what they usually try to do is recycle some of the older ones that can be used in a less intensive capacity. But after, you know, generally after four to five years, as we all know from our home computers, they become outmoded. So this, this is a cost of 60,000, this is to replace 50-plus computers at both libraries. And I will say, in talking with Library Director Kimball, most of the units are for Adams. Between, if the question comes up, roughly four to six are from the K Library, where that's a smaller facility.
Are these desktops or laptops?
A combination of desktops and laptops. I can get that number for you for, for Monday, but it's, it's a combination. And then, let's see, our next, so this is the second, this is the next, I think we skipped one here. Okay, and then also involving Adams Library, this is Phase Two of, I know you remember seeing this before. The HVAC system needs to be completely replaced, as we discussed at a previous meeting. And so this, this 450,000 of funding is to fund Phase Two of this. And as we've said in the past, you know, Adams Library underwent extensive renovations and construction of the new part in 2000, and the HVAC system is well past its useful life. And that's the reason that we need to, you know, undertake this project.
John, is that a gas-based, natural gas-based HVAC for heating? Or is it a heat pump technology coming out of?
I would have to defer to Director Clancy on that. But I know it's, you know, they're trying to modernize the system where they can. Part of the challenges they have is when the building was value engineered, a lot of the components were installed up in the ceiling and in hard-to-reach areas. So their hope is to try to, you know, make the system easier to maintain and not as.
And is it in line with the new municipal decarbonization roadmap planning initiative? Is it tied into this?
I will ask Director Clancy to speak on that, because I'm not, as far as I know, it's still under design, the system, so. And then, so then we come to public safety. So this is the other parking lot project that I spoke of. So this, this cost, with the savings included, is 405,000, as you can see. This pavement has had some small repairs over the years, but it has definitely seen better days. And it's about, it was, you can see that it was originally paved in 2004, and so the same thing here will involve pavement, curbing, and line striping. And that's the rear parking lot area of the police station. Then also, then we move on to the fire department, and this proposes to replace a command staff vehicle for just under 112,000. By the time this is funded, the current vehicle will be about 10 years old and has significant wear and tear. It is a frontline emergency vehicle. It's basically for the officer in charge to use. And as the fire chief explained, it does carry a lot of heavy-duty equipment. Then we move on to Public Works, and we have 375,000 of funding for sidewalk improvements. The sidewalk improvements will be based on the sidewalk assessment and master plan that Public Works has updated. And then also, we have 425,000 for roadway improvements, and that will be based on the pavement management database and, and condition assessment. So that way, they're, you know, the, the funds are targeted to the roads that are in the worst, worst condition. A piece of equipment is being replaced at Public Works is a mini excavator for a cost of 130,000. You can see from the slide, we're replacing a 2013 unit with a significant amount of operating hours. This is used primarily by the Highway Division. And then moving on, we have specialized piece of snow removal equipment. You can see for a cost of 210,000, this replaces an older 2003 model year unit with a significant amount of hours. Yes?
When we are replacing the equipment, what is done with the old equipment and what, what's done with the proceeds from the old equipment when they're sold? Does that go into the fund to help refund, to purchase the new equipment? Is it done as trade-ins? You know, what happened?
Yeah, so the department head can generally go a couple of different ways within the confines of state law. You can trade the equipment in towards the new equipment and receive a lower cost for that or credit, like trading in a car if you were to buy one. The other thing is, if that doesn't seem like you're getting a significant amount for the equipment, the town can do a surplus auction, and there's a website called Municipal Bid. And so that makes it a little more competitive, because now you have a lot more eyes looking at bidding on it than if, in the old days, if we just had an auction in Trumpsville, then most likely people just in northeastern Massachusetts are going to come to it. So we do sell equipment on Municipal Bid.
Where would that money go?
That money goes to, under nonrecurring receipts, it would go to the town's general fund from auction proceeds. So for it to stay within, for it to be used to offset the price of the new equipment, you would have to do a trade-in at that equipment dealer or vendor.
But the town would potentially summon things from the sale of the old?
Yes, we definitely do try to recover as much as we can when an older asset is traded in. The other, the other decision that a department head may make is to, if the unit could be still functioning and kept as a backup piece of equipment, however, if it's prone to breakdowns and that, then you have to wait. Is it worth keeping this, or should I just try to surplus it or sell it? And so you'll see on, I can tell you from looking at the, the next year of the Capitol Plan, Public Works has two older pieces of sidewalk equipment, and you'll most likely see a similar piece being replaced next, at the following year in fiscal year '27. And this is just something that was considered high priority because of the miles of sidewalk that they're trying to clear. The Public Works Director also spoke about, on the newer piece of equipment, it's possible to get one with other attachments, so it wouldn't be just limited to snow removal.
John, I'm sorry, I have another question, just related to the equipment in general. Is there any intent to drive commonality of equipment, therefore, you know, spare parts and everything can be, you, you, multiple departments using, say, Chevrolets or GMCs versus a Ford or a Dodge, so they can have commonality and savings when it comes to having the same repair parts and such?
Yeah, that's something that is, it really, you know, that would be at the operational level of, say, Public Works or facilities, but my understanding is they do make every effort to try to have similar models. And so, like the example you gave, if you had a fleet of 10 dump trucks, and they're all different manufacturers, then you have to try to get parts from different suppliers and that, so it just makes maintenance probably take longer and cost more. So I do know they make efforts to try to standardize equipment where possible. And then the next two pieces of equipment for Public Works, I just wanted to mention. So what you're going to see here is, you may have heard us speak in recent years about one of the challenges that Public Works has is each year, it becomes harder and harder to try to get contractors to plow during snow events. And so what they've had to do is rely more on department staff to fill in those gaps so that all of the snow removal routes are staffed. And so that's the, the reason I say that is just to explain the next two projects. So we're, the first slide here, we're replacing a 2010 Chevy Colorado, which many of you know is a lighter duty truck. Mileage is getting up there. But the cost on this is because DPW is looking to replace this with a three-quarter ton pickup that's capable of snow plowing with a plow package, so that the new truck, instead of being a Chevy color, excuse me, Chevrolet Colorado that can't be used to plow, they would then have greater versatility and be able to plow with the new truck. And then similar story on this, for this project, you're, we're seeking to replace a 2008 Ford Ranger, again, really not capable of plowing, with another three-quarter ton pickup equipped for snow plowing. You can see that it is an older truck, and the mileage is definitely up there. So that's the goal of these two projects.
And, John, Jen?
Yes.
Now that those trucks would be likely used more often, their lifespan will probably be shorter. If they're used for, for plowing, which is a heavy duty, I mean, and the miles of an rack are faster, so.
Yeah, they may, I mean.
We're not going to get the same life as we did before, because we're repurposing them, almost, we're adding to what's expected of them.
Yeah, I mean, you know, snow plowing, I will say, in recent years, I mean, it's one of those things, you need the equipment, because we never know, yes, we've experienced some climate change, but every once in a while, we get hit with some really good snowstorms. So I guess my answer would be, the, the Public Works Director, when she appeared at the Capitol Committee meeting, has really felt strongly that this would give them more versatility to be able to plow. You may, as you said, you may not be able to get 10, 12 years out of it, but they felt that moving to a three-quarter ton would give them more versatility for the equipment. And this, so this next project for municipal facilities involves 150,000. And this, so this next project for municipal facilities involves 150,000 to implement ADA accessibility improvements at public parks, playgrounds, and open spaces. And these would be developed from the town's Open Space and Recreation Master Plan. So that will be guiding them with those improvements. And then, under municipal facilities, if you've ever been to, visited town offices, you know that several of the restrooms have some very old fixtures and furnishings. And so this, the 180,000, this is part of a multi-year project, and based on the bids that Public Works received, this is expected to renovate two restrooms, and there's about a six total that will need to be renovated at town offices. Then we move on to school facilities. So this next project, you see the cost, the reason that the cost is 877,000 is, this involves improving security at a number of schools. It's four elementary schools, you see, Bayham Center, Harrington, and South Row, as well as Parker Middle School. And it also, and so the whole goal here is to construct more secure entryways and have a containment area, similar to what the school department did at McCarthy Middle School, and also at our high school. And then the project that's involved in here at Chumsford High School is installing a new stairwell at Chumsford High that will allow greater emergency access. One of the things that was discussed is, you know, the school was constructed in the early 70s. There's an area where if you have everyone that needs to exit the school at one time, there are some, this will alleviate some bottlenecking and give greater egress during an emergency event. So all of the schools, except for the high school, it involves, you know, constructing a better containment area, so you can have, you can, allow, have basically a security checkpoint, be able to check people in. If someone comes in the school that's questionable, staff could keep them in an area until help arrives. So that's the whole goal of that project. Then we move on to center school. This involves a partial roof replacement for 130,000. It's just over 8,200 square feet. It's an asphalt shingle-pitched roof. It's about 25 years old and needs definitely to be repaired. Then we move on to South Row School. This, this project for 60,000 involves the replacement of the water heater and mixing valve that serves the whole school, and the whole goal here, since the existing equipment's 12 years old, we just want to try to avoid having a, you know, an unplanned problem or failure of equipment. And then this next project involves McCarthy Middle School. You may recall that the design of this roof replacement was funded in this year, the fiscal year 25 capital plan. This is at a cost of 1 million. This, as you know, McCarthy Middle School is a very large school in terms of square foot, square footage and the roof. And so this, this will, there will be another phase to this project.
John?
Yes?
I know you probably can't answer this, but when we're replacing roofs on schools that were built 50-plus years ago, we know that a lot of these buildings aren't optimized for the current building standards when it comes to insulation. Is any consideration taken into maybe supplementing the insulation when the roofs, new roofs are being put in on? Like even just foam boards can make a big difference.
Yes, if they, yes, if they can do that, yes, if they could do that, if it's, if it's possible when you're removing the material, or they do look at that, if there's any way to increase the energy efficiency.
John, on this one also, you said there will be a phase, this is Phase Two of the project.
Yes.
And there will be a Phase Three.
There will be a Phase Three because of the, just the size of this. So the first, the first phase is, you know, is basically the design work for this.
Okay.
And then we move on to McCarthy Middle School with a boiler replacement for a cost of 700,000. So these, these boilers are about 18 years old, and so this project replaces four existing boilers. And one of the things that was brought up by facilities is, they've required more repairs in recent years, and so this is one of the last remaining schools.
John, question on this, again, these are gas boilers. Are they aligned with the fact that they're replacing it this late and we want the decarbonization plan? I'm sure that was not a feasibility or something around, but did we anticipate this a couple of years ago and, or a year ago, and is this something that we need to electrify in the future? Are we doing the right decision point? I know it's short-term.
Right.
I want to make sure the cap, it's not just Christine, it's also questions that the capital committee should be asking.
Yeah, when we, when we look at it, I mean, a lot of these schools are older, and so if you have a natural gas boiler, boilers installed, when you look at it from a financial standpoint and others, it probably makes the most sense to replace that with a natural gas boiler. If you're building a new school, if the town votes to build or replace Parker Middle School, then that would be the time to, you know, go towards electrification.
But hopefully, there's been more study done to replace what it is, but I'm just pointing out that we shouldn't be in a point where the school underwent, the school system especially underwent a $50,000 grant or study on decarbonization. If you're not align, aligning that, hopefully, there's a conversation around that that has happened. I'm not aware of what conversation happened, but.
Yeah, I mean, definitely, I would have to think, again, Director Clancy could speak on this, I would have to think that if you're replacing 18-year-old boilers with newer ones, even though it may be running on natural gas, I would have to think it's got to be more efficient than the older one. But that's, you know, that's something I can ask them to comment on. And then that completes the capital plan. We'll look at the capital plan.
Mr. Suza?
Yes?
Question. In, what percentage of the, I mean, I can have the percentage of the town, but over, over the years, is this higher or lower in general as a percentage?
Definitely higher.
It seems like, I remember about 3 million.
For, for several years, in fact, to go back in history, so when I first started serving this position, which is probably around 2008, I think it was around 2 to 2.5 million. And then it slowly, you know, with inflation and things, it slowly went up to about 3 million. The last year or two, we, this is actually the second year, it's actually been right near 6 million. And a lot of that's just inflation has really permeated into building materials, labor costs, and we just can't, if we, if we stay around 3 million, or 3, even 3.5 or 4 million, we would not be making the necessary investments in our building. So it is, it's very similar to last year, but it's definitely elevated from where it used to be.
I think I also know that when you go through your planning here and proposing for this, there are a number of projects that you reject or not reject, can, can fit in, elect to move to the next year or next year. Can you give us a few examples?
Sure. So this year, we, I think we, this is actually, believe it or not, this is a better year for funding and looking at the whole, the whole, all of the needs as a whole. So I believe we considered 22 projects, we were able to fund 19. I can give you the highlights of the three that, so one of them was a technology project for 100,000. It was actually withdrawn by the Technology Department, because they were able to fund it through an operating budget and through some savings. The second project was actually withdrawn. It was a, it was 50,000 in building improvements for the CCA, the Center for the Arts, but it was determined that the work that they wanted to do, we could not borrow for the funds. It was basically refurnishing a floor, doing painting. It's more operational and maintenance-type items that we could not, the town could not borrow. And then the third was a Public Works larger dump truck, and I want to say it was in the neighborhood of 250,000, I'll say 250 to 300, let's see, I want to say, let's say 350,000. And I believe those were the ones, and it was just, we, the committee saw the need was there, it's just funding was limited. So we tried to, you know, direct the funding to where we thought the needs were most critical. Other years, it's been much, it's been much more difficult to try to make those decisions.
So again, that concludes our presentation of all the warrant articles this evening. Again, John and I will be here afterwards for individual questions, but again, we hope to see everybody Monday night at 7:30, and then expected on Thursday evening at 7:30 as well. And again, if you, something comes up to you in the next few days, please don't hesitate to email John or me, or call us, and we'll, glad to help you prepare for town meeting. Thank you.